Welcome to the school community meeting for Thursday, January twenty second, two thousand and fifteen. We do have members of the media present. This is, it is, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone has, would like a copy or record of this evening's meeting, please feel free to contact myself or any other member of the board. Evening, everyone. Go ahead and get ourselves kicked off here. Start off with the approval, our first agenda item, which is the approval of minutes. This is from the meeting held December eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen minutes. I trust all members have had an opportunity to review them. If so, would you need a motion to accept? Motion from Mike, second from Joey, all in favor. We have five, five in favor, one recusal. Next up, we have invitation to speak. Anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Up next, we'll move on to announcements and correspondence. Done.
Yeah, I had a couple of calls. It's about sports, so one of the things I was gonna ask Bob, if you could remind your staff, your administration, that in the handbook, for the Department of Athletics Procedure Handbook for coaches, if somebody wants to talk to a coach on page six, it talks that it's, or it mentions that it's not appropriate to discuss playing time and other students with the coaches, and that the process should be followed by contacting the A D first. So, if somebody wants to complain about something, just have them go to the, the A D and follow the, follow the process, just like any other parent. And then, the other one was, I had a concern from a parent about, there wasn't adult supervision on one of the team's buses. So, if you could have the A D give me a call, I just wanna make sure that that was resolved. And that's it for correspondences.
Thanks, Bob. Jen.
I just wanted to mention that Woodland School, I was able to attend their family math night last night. They did a great job, very welcoming, a lot of staff were there. It was very low key and just a nice way to get the kids out of the house and actually focus on some math and just a fun, low pressure way. They, they did a great job.
Thanks. Couple of just thing, a couple of things real quick. I know that earlier this week, and Bob, I'll let you kind of talk about it for just a second, we did have a, an event up at the high school. It was really an event for parents to come in and look at social media and talk about how to help manage their social media and digital devices. As a, as the father of a teenager in a high school, it's, it is a, an ever-evolving world and it is very difficult to keep up with. And how do we keep our arms wrapped around it? So, I'll let you kind of talk a little bit about the, how that event went. It sounds like it was a very, very successful event. I wanna thank Bob and, and the rest of the school administration for putting up such a great event.
Sure, thanks, Joe. This past week, we did have a social media forum, Amy Leoni, who's with the Juvenile Advocacy Group in Milford, does a lot of work with our schools, has a private practice in Milford as well, and she's, really has her finger on the pulse of what's happening with kids and issues around bullying that can happen through social media particularly. So, we wanted to have an orientation for parents to say, how can we help you to be sure your child is safe in this sort of chaotic world of, of all these social media apps that are out there? And when a child goes to bed at night and they have their, their phone with them, you know, are they going to sleep? Or are they communicating with their friends and, or other things that can happen with that? So, it was very eye-opening for, for the parents. Without going into all the details of the event, if anyone would like to watch it, we have, I'm not sure if it's already posted, but if not, it will be posted on our district website, along with the actual copy of the presentation from that evening and a few supporting articles for families that will help them to take your child's device, go through there and, and see what kind of apps they have and be part of that discussion with your child to keep them safe. So, it was very well attended. We have another series, another event coming up in March that will be around social host responsibilities. And you, as you get to times with older kids, particularly around prom time or dances and things, and parents who may think that, you know, if I have all the kids at my house and they're all here and I give them a beer or something like that, it's gonna be fine. They're all under my watchful eye and they're not driving and, but there's a whole other world to that kind of decision that parents need to be aware of. And we wanna make sure our parents are informed about that. So, this is a, this is the, will be the third parent forum event that we've had this school year and, and they're going very well.
Excellent, thanks, Bob. All right, any other announcements or correspondence? Okay, we'll move on. Up next, we have Milford Public Schools Technology Presentation. So, we do have our Director of Technology for the town, Paul Blevis is here this evening. Thanks, Paul, for, for coming out and, and taking time.
I'll just pass this out, this just gives a little guy on our basis of what we're gonna talk about tonight and everybody can hear this safely.
Thanks, Paul. So, Paul, we got three things on the agenda for you. The first is the Milford Public Schools District Needs-Based I T Assessment. Second is Milford Public Schools Technology Plan for two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen. And finally is the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen technology budget. So, I'll issue, the form is yours.
Yeah, sounds great. Once again, thank you for having me and taking the time out to listen to, you know, presentation, really kind of what's been happening up to now, up to this point. And I think those first few pages kind of outline some things that we've been doing at the school up to now. And, you know, I can go into the people that we have on staff currently and what the roles are again and that sort of thing too. But we can get into those portions and then we also have the assessment that you'll see that we had from World Ban last year, how we're kind of measuring up to that, what we're doing to kind of have that be a little guidance for us in terms of, you know, project initiatives and so forth. And what we have is a technology plan going forward too and seeing what we actually have here in the schools and what we project to do within the near term and also long term for our goals. So, I know there was some needing of an update for kind of what we do here at the schools. And we won't go into the town side of it, but just remaining with the school side. As you can see, I just put together, this isn't a complete list, but I was just kind of scrolling through many of the projects that we did and through my emails and just different items through the help desk as to what we accomplished. And I think it's good for us to understand that, you know, things are progressing and we always want them to continue to progress. And I think that's why we're all here, right, is to make, make sure that we're on target with some milestones and continue to make things happen in a positive manner. So, I don't wanna run through all of these bullets. I mean, you can see them on your own too, but there's, you know, over thirty of them. And these are kind of just ones that stuck out to me. If you have any questions on any of them, please feel free and I can elaborate more. I think the big one was the help desk system, which was, you know, in tune a while ago, back in October. This kind of helps us keep track of, you know, anybody's issues that are going on in the school. It helps us to keep track of where we stand in the resolution to those tickets. And kind of gives us a trending pattern too of maybe certain ones that continue to happen or, you know, problems with certain hardware and that sort of thing. So, that was a big initiative and I think it was mostly well-adopted by all. And it was very positive for us going forward. So, it helped with the new hires coming on board. They were very well-versed in it and continue to plug away at the ticket, so to speak, so.
That question I have for you is,
Sure.
are you backlog with help desk tickets right now or are you caught up?
Well, that's a great question because we now have Jonathan Capizzi with us in the school. And he just started a couple of weeks ago. And I think this is the point where we're really gonna start to see that turning of the tide. So, we still have some backlog in tickets now, but we see that within the next few weeks of drastically dropping down. So, it's a major help going forward. And the tickets that are open now, I would say maybe two weeks will get them really down to a manageable level.
So, it's safe to say then that being backlog, the new tickets that are coming in are also going to the back of the line?
Uh, they are, depending on priority. You know, as we, as we see the ticket come in and prioritize, you know, we'll take care of urgent needs too, so, yep.
Paul, just a quick question for you. So, just a quick follow-up on Mike's question on the back, on the, on the ticket logs. What is the, do you have a sense of what the range of timeframe is for the length of time some of those tickets have been outstanding? Obviously, some of them may be, may have gone in within the last couple of hours, I would imagine.
Sure.
Up to, you know, what's the longest time ticket that's outstanding right now?
Um, I'd say a few, a few months. And that was just, that was just in turn because of, we're, we're waiting for some hardware or, you know, structure and that point. So, I mean, it's just a matter of timing. Those aren't a pressing need, so to say, and we have other issues to take care of. And, you know, we stay in contact with those who put in the ticket and make sure they're just aware of our priority list and that sort of thing too, so. But as I mentioned, these will be like drastically reduced over the next couple of weeks, so you won't see any with that length in there.
Okay, so what's your, so you said the next couple of weeks here. So, what's your sense of, you know, where you, what's, what's your, what's your service delivery agreement? Do you have a ser, and I guess that's my first question. Is there a service, service level agreement that, that, that the schools will, should expect from the I T department with regards to length of time a ticket should take to complete?
Sorry. No, I had hoped initially when we first started the help desk, you know, get a couple of months running before we actually had an S L A. But just with one person doing the tickets, it wasn't quite feasible because, you know, a typical week would just be that we'd have to pull away from a few tickets just to go and take care of some fires and so forth. But now, as, again, as we have two now with Jonathan on board, that's when we can actually start projecting that we're gonna just start chopping these away. So, now with that framework in place, we can get to an S L A. So, I would say within a thirty-day frame that I can certainly put a policy in place for an S L A, you know, and tier those, yep.
So, service level agreement within thirty days is what you're targeting there?
Yep.
For the benefit of the group here as well as for anybody that may be watching from home as well, can you touch on some of the, you know, when we think about sort of the first thing that's on here as far as the needs-based assessment? Based on what we've got here, and I appreciate this, I, I, you know, certainly would love to, you know, wanna spend some time with digging through this and, and being able to ask some probably additional questions as I'm, I'm sure the members will as well. Can you give us an overview as we ask, as, from an agenda item perspective of what is the district-based needs from an I T perspective right now? I know you'd sent over a plan to Dr. Tremble, you'd sent it out to the rest of the group and to the rest of the committee for our review of, you know, what does that look like right now? What is your needs-based assessment? How have you prioritized those? Obviously, we're gonna get into the dollar, the two big places where this committee plays, which is policy.
Yep.
If there's any policy changes that need to be either changed or reviewed as a result of this. And secondly, you know, the power of the purse, which is obviously, you know, budgetary responsibility, so.
Sure.
If you could give a review for us and, and just kind of going through that piece on the district needs.
Yep. Yeah, I think overall, we, we took a kind of a step back and took a look at what we have currently and what we wanna see going forward. And the most pressing need before we can start adding things to the network would, would be like a fiber connection really coming into the building. And we see that as, you know, when we had the phone system put in, it, it didn't really put a strain on the network, but it's more of, it's a load that needs to be supported, you know, in a much better fashion too. So, the network is a, is a, is a great stepping stone to building on future projects. And the biggest part of that is going to be the, the fiber and also understanding where everything runs through the buildings themselves. You know, with switches and the wiring and the jacks coming into each room. That's the biggest need right now because we have certain I P schemes that we run things on and traffic on and data on. And currently, it, it needs to be kind of a flattened network, so to speak, and that's more a technology terminology. But in essence, we just need to kind of take an approach where that we can get a baseline to start off with the network and build upon it correctly. Cause right now, it's just kind of scattered throughout. So, we, we recognize that. And the positive thing going forward is to have that, that mapping in front of us. So, that would be the pressing need for the district right now.
So, and I just wanted, just so I'm getting this straight. So, fiber, being able to bring in and run fiber connection is one. Two is getting a mapping done of what the network looks like, you know, where, knowing where all the switches, levers, everything else, everything, all the wires are run through is a separate piece as well.
Correct, and I would say that's the, that's the first priority.
That's number one.
Correct. Yep.
Jen.
Just while around the topic of staffing. So, just so I'm clear, we, you mentioned Jonathan Capizzi, and then who is the other person who supports tech?
Brandon Vandal.
So, there are two people.
Correct.
So, you don't support the tickets. You're, that's not your, what we're, we're, it's the two.
Correct, yeah, we have meetings and prioritizing that sort of thing, so I have meetings with my, with my team, but, correct.
So, we have the two guys and they're supporting the six schools, including Shining Star, I assume, and Central Office.
Right.
So, that's up to like eight locations probably that they're supporting. Do you have any kind of an estimate in terms of how many devices we have? And when you look at the whole district, what, what are the two people actually supporting?
Yeah, it's, um, it's a lot. I mean, there, there's thousands of devices, obviously. I mean, we have thousands of students, so it, it's more than, than recommended. But I mean, you know, we're getting there, you know, as far as, you know, I, I just try to focus on, you know, getting as many tickets as we can kind of closed at a given point. But, yeah, we, we do our best.
So, I guess part of my concern on that and to Jen's point, so, and again, this is, I don't work in the schools, it's not my area of expertise and I certainly don't work in I T. But if we were to put it in, in outside terms, so just the school system by itself, we're a company of about forty million dollars, forty-one million, give or take, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. And we have three hundred and fifty, four hundred, roughly four hundred employees, call it?
Well, that access technology.
Yeah, that access technology, roughly four hundred people. And we have, including yourself, we have three people to support technology for three hundred people in a forty-million-dollar organization. All right, that's all, forgive me, that's very, is that, you're the professional. Is that giving you what is needed? And when I hear about tickets that are months old, from a prioritization perspective, I'm, I'm happy that we've got some people in place that are starting to catch up on that. But it feels a little bit like you're trying to bail the Titanic with a teaspoon. Is that?
It, it is. It, it's a feeling like that and, and, you know, as additional people come on board, that's when I'm like, you know, this is starting to, you know, feel a little better. But it certainly could be, you know, I mean, more people. You know, just from recommendations and other things I've had with other districts and even, I think, just, you know, across the board, I think there should be more people. And, and I think we have a vision to see that, you know, in the near future, so.
Okay, Mike, I know you had a question.
Just a, the first time you came before us, you know, I had a question for you and I was very concerned about you as the department head being out on the road doing the repairs. And, you know, I look at this World Ban report and the first thing they recommend is governance. And right in it says, formalize the technology department governance rules, responsibilities, authority, and accountability. Have you had time to do any of that with what you've been dealing with?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we all work, you know, a lot of hours, you know, through the week and the weekends. And you think, you think about your job all the time. So, I mean, it's a matter of, you know, I, I formulate things, I put in place policies and procedures, you know. And, you know, with our growing team, we have divvied up the responsibilities in certain areas of the tickets and who's better at what and so forth. So, we know our, our own expertise. But, you know, and again, with the S L A and so forth, so it's going in that, in that right path, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not, and please forgive me, it, it's, it's not about the, the tickets. It's a, it's very clearly defined that what they want you to be doing is getting the department set up, running, managed, put rules and policies in effect.
Yep.
And I guess my question to you again is, you're finding with the load that you have on you, you have the ability to do that?
Um, not as much as I would like, for sure. You know, I mean, I, I have set policies and procedures in place, but I, I mean, there, there could be a, a book of those, you know, that we need to incorporate. But, yeah, I mean, definitely help would be helpful. Right, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just didn't wanna come in saying, oh, I need this, I need this, I need this. You know, it's, it's, um, it, it's, it's huge.
And I, and I think that's, I think that's fair, Paul. I think one of the things that I can speak for myself, and I wanna speak for the members, so, is when you'd come before us before, one of the things that we asked, and I remember asking the question of, how, what do you need? And, you know, one of the things that you'd come, that you'd said at that point was, I don't know yet.
Yep.
I've got two things down.
Okay.
That sound like things that you need.
Yeah.
One is mapping.
Yep.
Second one is fiber connection.
Yep.
So, I guess my question, I'm gonna pose the exact same question I asked last time. What do you need?
Okay.
We've got a, again, I'm not saying that we, we don't have an empty checkbook. We don't have a blank check that we can just write to you. Great if we did, but we don't.
Right.
But we're, I think we're, we're in a position where we wanna make sure that we understand what it is that you're looking for. What are your needs? So that that way, as a board and as a committee, we can take a look at working with the finances, working with the finance committee, working with town meeting, looking within our own budget to be able to understand of what it is that we're, the prioritization. What do you need? And how can we reallocate our resources, if needed,
Yep.
to be able to get done? I, I'm very concerned when it comes to technology. There's a lot of safety and security that comes along with that. And just the simple things of, if technology goes the wrong way, if the server goes down and we're trying to send over the finance and Kathy's trying to send over finance information over to town hall and get pay, get payroll out, I'll, I'll be happy to trade cell phones with you when the teachers don't get their cell, when they don't get their paycheck this week.
Right.
That's gonna be a huge, huge problem. So, that's, those are the types of things, at least for me. That's what I'm hoping that we're gonna get out of this evening is, what does this look like? What does it do? In very layman's terms, at least for me, cause I won't understand if you put in exact terms.
Certainly, yeah.
And for the benefit of the, of the public that's, that's viewing as well. But I'll, I'll certainly open it up to the committee if there's any other questions done. I think you had your hand up.
Uh, when, when was this, because the date's not on this, when was the world base assessment done?
Before I started, Bob, I don't know when exactly, it was probably spring last year, maybe?
Yeah, I think it was last spring, just before you came on.
Yeah.
When, when did you come on?
Uh, middle of June.
Middle of June?
Yep.
So, about six months.
Yep.
All right. You know, I, I read through this before coming in here and, you know, again, this is, this is not anything to do with you, cause again, you inherited, I said it last time, you inherited a mess. For three years I've been here and for three years, I, I've heard concern after concern about, you know, network, security, vulnerability, everything else. And until you came on board, nothing was done, right? Or it was always just kind of patched. So, I, I have, I have some questions, cause in this, you know, before I get into the, the staffing concerns, you know, the, the things that this pointed out to me that really jumped out was the fact that we don't have policies. So, I know at work, I have to view a video about our technology policies, what I can and cannot use my device for and sign off that I agree to that. Do our four hundred employees do that? Have we done, have we taken it to that level?
I don't think we have that, no.
I didn't think so either. So, to me, you know, that opens us, opens us up to legal concerns that, you know, so that's one of the first things that I, I thought we should address. And make sure everybody understands what that policy is and the policy committee should really dive into this. I just went on our website, we don't have a technology policy. And, and that kind of alarms me that, that that's not public, right? So, the other thing that jumped out was, you know, we have a lack of wireless capabilities throughout the district. The whole WAN issue, right, the wide area network. One of the alarming things from this a year ago was the telephone piece. They even talked about when they did their assessment, how the phone system went down for three days. And now I noticed one of your bullets said something, it's kind of vague, about the phone system. Has that been redone? Because in this, they, they explained that our license with Cisco expired. We didn't upgrade or redo maintenance or anything else like that. So, everything, all of the phones we had have expired their life cycle. So, has this been a whole new system put in place within the last six months?
Yeah, it was actually right when I came on board, I think, with Facilities and myself. But they have all new hardware as far as servers or the routers go. So, all that had to be upgraded and I think they made several of the buildings upgrade their hardware just for compatibility reasons. All the phones, I think, are existing. We kept all the phones, I think there was four hundred plus phones that, that they kept in place and, yeah.
So, is our license with Cisco and the maintenance and everything else up to date?
Yes, yeah.
All right, and then, you know, they, they talked about low speeds and then obviously the security vulnerability being a big issue. So, you know, when I look at the two thousand and fifteen tasks on here, you know, a lot of it was software, but there's things like ink cartridges and toners is like the top on the list versus, you know, building out the infrastructure. Now, I understand that you built out five new servers, but in today's world, it's like a cloud-based world out there. You know, I know my company has three hundred employees. We don't have a single server in that building. Everything is done using cloud-based solutions. So, I mean, did we do any assessment as to what was the cost of those five servers versus outsourcing? And how much of our existing technology could be converted to cloud-based? And if it is, what's that cost savings? You know, because the cost savings or whatever we can drive could be used to build out that infrastructure. You know, the whole WAN, so, and, and the whole importance of that for the public is the connectivity of the schools and be able to have the collaboration between the different schools in the district and the teachers is, is critical for growth. And, and that doesn't exist at all. So, you know, that, that's what I want from you is an understanding. I want like a, hey, we went down this path, here are the key points that were identified by World Base, here are the costs associated, cause in their cost assessment, it's three times what we're spending. We're spending about a hundred and fifty grand and they're telling us we should spend four hundred and fifty thousand. And I agree with them. So, to go to your, your resources, you know, talked about tickets. Did you get the ticket software to manage those tickets yet? Cause I noticed that didn't, that, all right, cause that was.
Yeah, no, that's totally in place, yep.
All right, so in World Ban's report, that hadn't been done yet. So, I'm happy to hear that.
Yep.
But these two individuals weren't even supposed to be doing tickets, right? They were supposed to be instructional people? Is that correct?
Well, let me just come on on that then, that's different. And what you put in the, in your presentation packet tonight, Paul, is different than what the, what's currently in place. What this, what this is referring to is the two paraprofessionals that we had in place, both who aren't with us anymore and we moved to an instructional, so I don't know.
Yeah, I, I just pulled a couple of the key pages out of that world assessment ju, just to simplify it. But I, I noticed there were a couple of pa, pieces in there for that two instructional piece, yeah.
Just to be clear on that, we, we modified based on the recommendations for World Ban. We, those paraprofessionals no longer exist. Our instructional people are doing instructional work and our technician people are doing technician work. So, they're not, we don't have them doing work that's outside of the scope of their job description.
All right, cause in this.
It's been corrected.
All right.
Yeah, this is.
I, I apologize, I, I was just trying to highlight some of the key points that were in there that kind of like what we need based upon their assessment initially. But I noticed some of the things didn't exist anymore, so, yeah.
So, I mean, for me, you know, I, I see your, you know, two thousand and fifteen, we have to work in the network. Two thousand and sixteen, backup wireless, architectural build-out, et cetera, right? And, and that's fine. I mean, I wish this could have been done three years ago. You know, I've been asking for this to be done for three years. So, it's unfortunate that it's now a three-year plan starting now, right, versus three years ago. And again, you know, so I understand what you walked into. So, don't, don't feel like anybody here thinks that you're not doing a good job. It's just, you know, we're, we've all been so anxious to have this done for so long. And now that you're here, I, I know we all wish we could snap our fingers and everything would be in place. But to get it done fast, my opinion is that we should be outsourcing ninety percent of this. That things like servers, they have shared servers, shared networks. A company could come in here and set this thing up within a month or two. Instead of that homegrown, hold it to our chest, try to do it ourselves and own, own it. I'd rather see you orchestrate what is the best solution, whether it's outsourced or internal. What are the cost benefits of both? Cause in this report, it talks about a hybrid solution, which I agree with.
Yep.
But what are those things that we could outsource quickly to reduce this three-year timeframe that you have down to a year or two? Because when I see vulnerability and security and stuff like that in year two, that doesn't settle with me, you know, as well. And I'm sure it doesn't settle with the public. And the real benefit, again, of having this connectivity throughout the district as well as the town is, is now you have an infrastructure that you can build on. is, is now you have an infrastructure that you can build on, and, and you can build, you know, add those collaborative, uh, software, you know, components that make people more efficient. Right? I mean, that's the whole thing, and that's gotta be part of your report is, it's not just how much is this piece of software cost. You know, what's the ROI that we're gonna get out of this? What, you know, what's the, the net benefit, you know, over time? If we add this piece of software, this piece of hardware, or whatever it might be. So, um, I, I would really encourage you to reach out to some organizations. There are a lot of them here in the local area, and some of the best in the world.
Yep.
To talk to them about, hey, listen, we have a three-year plan here. We really need to address this. What are the things you can help us and help us reduce the time? And I don't know what we have to do with the budget. Uh, I know we're gonna have conversations on Saturday, but, um, I don't know what our line item is, Kathy, but it should be more in this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range that they recommended. Um.
In terms of budget, uh, Donna, on the last page.
Alright.
What he's looking to add.
Okay, the, is there an outsourced piece in there?
No, I think it was just, um, gear and things like that, so, yeah. But you, you, you make a good point, and it kinda reiterates too what Scott was saying in terms of, uh, the, the timing of all of this. I just, as well as you guys, wanna do this as fast as possible. And in order to do that as fast as possible, obviously the cost is, i- it increases. But I do already have in place, um, I, I did three vendors, uh, to come in and do that network mapping, which gives us that advantage of, cuz it's not just a, a basic mapping. They're gonna come in with, uh, recommendations as far as how it should be built, you know, and this and that, so they're gonna give us a, a really good insight, um, into, uh, options, to give us some options and routes to go in that, in that piece too, so. I think coupled with that and that fiber, that real backbone coming in, then we can just start piling on all these things, you know, but, um, a- and, and I agree a hundred percent about the vulnerabilities. I- if those get put off, I'm afraid something critical's gonna go, y- you know, go down, so. Addressing those needs as fast as we can is, is, is key. It's, um.
Well, again, we're going into our budget conversation, so, to me, the, the most important thing for us to have is, you know, not what you're looking to do quickly here, okay? I, I'd like to see the big picture, you know, what is it to resolve this three-year plan? What's that one-time hit to get us to where we should be? And then what's the ongoing maintenance and, you know,
Yeah.
uh, spend beyond that? Cuz I'm expecting a big hit up here upfront. You know, uh, I'm expecting you to come in and say it's gonna be a half a million dollars or more. Uh, that's what I expect.
Yeah.
But, but once we do that, and we're up to date, and we're in compliance and everything else like that, then our spend is minimal, right? So, uh, the, again, my recommendation would be, find out what the total picture is, and then, you know, what's that hybrid solution gonna cost us? And, uh, what's the ROI and, and so- some of the benefits that we can get from outsourcing some of these activities? Not just the time involved, but, let's face it, if these guys are doing tickets all day long, and they're unable to do a lot of these things, well, that's, that's hurting us, you know, so.
Yeah, it just prolongs it too, right, yeah. And, um, eh, eh, just a further comment on that too. Uh, I, I did that when I initially came in. I, I think you do that anyway with a new job and so forth, you're like, this should be this way, a- a- and you have a, a vision of what that network should look like. And I just, I, I did the numbers a long time ago, and it, it was, it was over a million dollars. You know, a- and I know walking into a, a school and asking for a million dollars, um, but it's, i- it's all what we wanna do when we wanna do it, a- and, and I guess, that's, this is the correct forum for it, um, is to know how fast we wanna get this to a, a stable environment whereas we can lessen those vulnerabilities going forward, so, yeah.
Yeah, so ju- just a, a couple of things, um, first, just, just to clarify, we do have an acceptable use politi- policy for technology. So if, if you haven't looked at that yet, Paul, we, we definitely strongly encourage you to take a look at that and let us know if you have any feedback, cuz if we do need to make some changes to that policy, we'll, we'll take that under advisement.
Just for clarification, the acceptable use policy is for students or for teachers?
Both.
Yes, for both, for all the boys as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so it, it, it definitely passed along some, some feedback on that. Um, the, the one, eh, the one thing that really stood out for me in the world, well, there are a couple of things that really stood up in the World Band report. The, the first was the, the, the staffing, um, and it, it clearly stated that the D, the, the DESE recommended a total staff of ten individuals support a, a school district our size, and that was a technology director, a systems administrator, five technical support staff, and then three instru- instructional specialists. So today we have the director, we, we now have two support staff, and then I think we have two integration specialists.
One right now, we're, we're looking to add another one for, there was a request for another one for FY sixteen.
That's right.
For our, that's, as our preliminary budget conversation.
So we probably have about a third of the staff that they, they recommend, so it's, so to Donnie's point, we have to be able to fill that gap through, through outsourcing if we can't have the staff in place. And earlier on, you mentioned you had a vision for the staffing, and the one thing I'm not clear on, now that we, the town has this IT department, does the additional staff fall under your budget, or does it fall under our budget?
Um, the one that we just hired, I think, falls under the school budget, and the one that's coming goes under the town budget.
So Brandon Van Dow, for example, is a technician under the town budget, but Jonathan Capice, who we just hired, is a school, is a technician for the school department.
Okay.
So we have that, you know, whether we wanna con- we had the discussion with the finance committee as we go forward as to whether or not we wanna build a technology town department line. We still have to show that the school is spending X number of dollars per school on technology. Then make sure we're showing that, you know, we're, we're, it can't just be all taken out of the school budget and put on the town line.
And that's a requirement by state mandate for us to receive
Correct.
funding of any kind, if we're not spending money, if we're not demonstrating to the state that we're spending X number of percentage of dollars on technology, we put at risk the mo- the bulk of what we get for financing, for all chapter seventy money goes to risk.
But as Paul builds a program and, and, and has a, a vision for the, for the town and for the school department, certainly we can have a session with the finance committee to see where we wanna build that, what's the best way. Is it a school item, or is it a, a, a town item, you know?
Well, eh, eh, I think that's a critical question, because if, if, if it's ultimately a school issue and a school item, then we control it, right?
Right.
If it's not, then it's out of our hands, and we do, work very closely with Paul and, and with the other departments to, to get the resources we need to support the school. So, I think we need to get some clarity around that piece of it. So I don't know, I, 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 I probably should let you answer the, I threw a bunch of questions at you, but w- w- earlier you mentioned the vision. So what is your vision for the staffing? Like, where do you see this going?
Um, eh, just having looked at other and visited other, uh, you know, districts too, and, and I, I mentioned this to Bob just, uh, today. We were talking about, um, the structure of the, uh, the staff. I mean, we definitely, definitely need a network, you know, like a senior system admin or a network admin, uh, you know, to really go through the network and configure it the way it should be. In addition to those support technicians supporting, I think it's usually like one per four hundred people or something is, is about what you can juggle, so I, I think, you know, what, maybe four of those, um, you know, just going off the top of my head, but just having an understanding of that, and then we talked about a data manager too, um, in terms of having a data manager for the district itself, um, would help with the student information systems and, you know, that sort of thing as well, but.
And I assume you're doing a cost benefit analysis to determine, does it make sense to hire the staff or just outsource it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, between, right, between the hourly rate of what we contract out and, and how many hours per month and so forth, yeah.
And then, um, sorry, the la- the last thing, the last question I had was, um, there's obviously a lot of grant money that's available to school districts. I- is that something that falls under your umbrella? Are you responsible for identifying those grants and, and filling out those applications, or is it someone, is there another resource that does that?
Uh, we have the resource within the central office, I believe, and I'm getting more acclimated to it as the process goes. And Kevin and Kathy both are, uh, on top of, you know, anything that comes in as far as grants are concerned, and they, they come to me for the technology piece of filling in certain things to complete the application, so.
And everything that we're discussing this, uh, tonight in terms of switches and servers and the fiber network, um, I've been trying to investigate our best option, because the Obama administration has moved the funding for E, E-rate from telecom services to everything that we've discussed. So now we have to build our, I wouldn't call it a grant, but it is a reimbursement process for the fiber, the switches and the hardware. So, I, I'm building that currently, and, and the, the, um, application will close in the end of February.
Do we have a sense of what that reimbursement might look like?
Uh, for instance, on the fiber, if we went, uh, uh, we're out to bid right now, and if, um, the cost to a commercial company was about a hundred and twelve thousand a year, uh, for our district, we would, um, have to vet out sixty thousand of that. So the, the federal government would support about forty-five. That's what I'm hearing. Uh, this is new to me, because it's new territory. But that's right now what I'm being quoted.
We also submitted a grant.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, we actually collaborated on this with Kevin, Kathy, Paul and myself. Uh, the DESE grant actually was a competitive grant. We were, we were, uh, named as a candidate for the grant when we had a follow-up webinar with the state as to maybe where our application fell short. We haven't seen the actual fee, application we gave and what the feedback was, where we fell short in certain areas. Um, but it sounded, it was completely convoluted, with the districts that were already had one-to-one initiatives in place. We're looking just to get fiber in place. The districts that had one-to-one in place were the districts they were funding. When we're trying to get districts like ourselves in that direction to get us some startup money, they would, eh, this would push us into the candidate category, cuz we didn't already have it in place, so. There was a number of districts that were, that were on this webinar, that you could see the frustration that we, we shared that as well, so. We're looking for every available dollar we can that's through grants as ways they come up.
Yeah, and the, and the vendors that I'm working with too have their own E-rate people in staff, and, and we connect them with, with Kathy too, so. We're trying every possible way.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I just have o- one more, really, a point of order, I guess, uh. I think one of the things that frustrates us, the members the most, is that, and not just your department. And we bring people before us every year, and ask them, what are they, what do they want and what do they need? Two different things, wants and needs.
Yep.
And then halfway through the school year, they're back before us again because something isn't working, and the reason it is working is cuz they didn't get something that they needed. And what I need from you, or what we need from you from this point forward is, if you need ten people, you gotta tell us you need ten people.
Okay.
Alright, it's, it's our responsibility to go find how we're gonna do that. Maybe we can't get you ten, maybe we can get you eight.
Right.
You know, to, to what Donnie was saying, is if, you know, if you don't think service is the right way to go, you gotta tell us service isn't the right way to go. You spend another fifty thousand dollars, you're gonna move five years down the road in technology.
Sure.
So from this point forward, when you come, you used the word sugarcoating earlier. Don't sugarcoat anything.
Yep.
I'm a big guy. Tell me the way it is, and all of us, and we'll, we'll get it done. We'll figure a way to help you
Gotcha.
get your job done, to make the district something to be proud of.
Paul, what I would tell you is, to Mike's point, uh, and I know this is your first venture in working in, working with public entities.
Yep.
It's not that different from working in private entities. Nobody's ever negotiated up a salary. It's, it's easier to add, come in and tell us what you need.
Yep.
And then, eh, I, I would tell you on this, what, where, where you're hearing some of the frustration and some of the, a lot of passion, and it's not necessarily directed at you. I think a lot of the passion that you're hearing around this is, is, um, one of the things that I've seen, a- and this is in my concern with the technology piece, is, a number of years ago, when it came to facilities, the town in Milford had, had beautiful schools that we'd spent a ton of money on building and constructing. And about twenty years ago, the money was not invested in maintaining them. Then what happened was, is all of a sudden it went through, all of a sudden we followed, started falling into disrepair in some of our buildings cuz then we went through a period of neglect, about ten years.
Yep.
Then all of a sudden, it was massive investments of taxpayer money, and what happened? We had to gut a middle school, we had to gut an elementary school, we're building another elementary school. We're spending, when you look at the total dollars amount here, you're, we're netting out well over the hundred million dollars that we've spent on it, when it's not that we necessarily could've avoided it, in all cases, but after years of neglect, all of a sudden we had to get through this. Our concern with the technology is, is technology has become the virtual facilities
Yep.
that we spent years in neglect twenty years ago, and it took us, and it's taken us this long. We're now, now coming into the tail end of our long-range educational plan, with the completion of it, and building a new elementary school, which to the tune of almost sixty-one million dollars, thirty-four of which would be Milford taxpayer money. Um, solely, and it's taken us fifteen years to get to this point. My concern on the technology piece is, we've done the same thing, and we need to get to a point now where, if it's, if you really need ten, ask for ten.
Okay.
Don't come in and tell us you need seven because you think that's what we want to hear.
Yep.
Let us say, you know what, we go, we know you need ten. Here's where we are, let us take a look, let us do our jobs of doing the research, working with the finance committee, working with the board of selectmen, working with town meeting, looking at the finances to come back and go, okay, so I can't get you ten, we can get you this, or Gary News, we can find you ten cuz we prioritize and move some things around. Don't come in and tell us what you think we wanna hear. Come in and tell us what you need.
Okay.
Jen, I know you have something that you wanted to say.
Yeah, um, y- I totally understand that you, you walked into what clearly was a lot and a huge challenge with the infrastructure, and all of what we have here, from my perspective, is about infrastructure. And I know that you need the foundation before you build the house, and I get all of that. Um, but what I'm also really looking for, and I don't feel like I see in the documents, is an understanding of the big picture of technology in terms of how it's being used for teaching and learning in the Milford public schools right now. And I'm a mom of two kids, um, as well as a member of this board. I don't know how they're using technology during their school day, and I'm fairly certain that it's minimal compared to our neighboring districts. I don't understand, um, nor have I seen, what is the vision for a twenty-first century classroom in Milford? And, y- you know, when I see this vision statement here, it doesn't tell me anything about what do we want for kids? What do we want kids, when they walk out of here after thirteen years in Milford public schools, what should they have learned? What should they be able to implement? How is technology supporting the learning in these classrooms? And really, until, yes, I understand we need staff to keep things up and running, and if they're not up and running, then it's all moot point anyway, but I really wanna understand, how would the staff be used so teachers feel like they can use the latest and greatest? I, I work in a school, I see things being used all the time, and when I asked my third grader the other day, you know, huh, what do you have for computers and how are you using them? And he says, sometimes the teachers let us use their phones. That, that's not acceptable. That's, it, it's not enough, and when you're telling me there's so many devices that we don't even, y- that you, you don't have a number of, of them right away, I wanna understand what, what's the purpose of these devices? How are we acquiring new devices? What are the apps? What are the programs? What's, what's in every classroom? Um, how are we going to use Woodland as a model for the rest of the district? Um, you know, if we're really preparing our kids, then I really wanna understand whether it's through you or through the technology task force. What, what is this going to look like, and how are we going to support the path, the journey to get there, and obviously, that's not gonna happen overnight, but, um, we, we need, every single day that ticks by, and we're not helping kids access other exciting ways of learning. Um, a- and if, and if teachers are just so frustrated, even if they have them at their disposal, again, they, they may as well not even be there, so that's what, I hate to talk about I, cuz I'm not an I, I'm a member of this board, but I really need to understand the vision for teaching and learning, and that's something that I would be looking for
Okay.
um, as we move forward.
Sure. Excellent points, yes, I appreciate that.
Eh, you know, and I will, um, say again, I'm re- I'm really concerned about the division between school and town. I think that's, that's really tricky, and I've worked in a district where we divided up. We took the school for, you know, the, the Paul of our district, and we then said you're going to do town and school, and it was a disaster, and we ended up going backwards. And I'm really, really concerned about taking resources for schools and dividing them amongst the town, because I don't think it's fair to the town departments or the school departments. Um, we, we just don't have enough people to manage all of the needs, or enough people to get into. What, what do schools need? Uh, and there, there's, you just can't understand, um, the pain of a teacher bringing, you know, twenty-something kids into a classroom, and having something not work, and expecting one thing, and, and being disappointed, and having a lesson flop, because every single day out of a hundred and eighty is really precious, and, um, we're relying on this technology, and and then there's the whole professional piece, that we need teachers to, they need help and understanding of how they can apply, um, technology for, for learning, and, you know, I, I'd really like to see more, more about that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to follow up on Jen's point too, because when I read the, uh, world base assessment, you know, one of the things that they talked about is, you know, the technology about having like the digital whiteboards and, eh, eh, I think they said the average was one PC per classroom, and it was mostly used for the teacher's purpose. Not, to your point, in an educational way.
Yep.
And, uh, and then it was also alarming that it said that our computer lab was extremely outdated. And, um, so, I think. And, um, so I think we're so far behind, to Jen's point, all the other districts around here. I mean, I mean, for three years, three years ago, we talked about, do we bring iPads into the room? And, you know, I, we, we haven't. And we've always said, oh, we're gonna see how it plays out in other districts. Well, now we're so far behind. I know my son, his high school, he has a notebook now that they gave him, that he brings into his class. And it's all interactive and it cost me, the parent, twenty dollars. That's it. I had, I had to pay the school twenty dollars for him to lease that notebook for the entire year. That's not a problem for me. I, I, you know, and, and it's, it's not big dollars. Uh, but when you see other districts doing that and what, what they're able to do, and then you realize how far we are behind. And, and so that gets me back to that whole outsourcing to try to speed up this process. And, and I also wanted to make one, one point on that before I move on. But the outsourcing, the benefit of that isn't just cost savings, right? What they can do and, you know, for time, cost and efficiency, right? If you hire your own internal team, you're gonna have like three or four people that know what they know. By outsourcing, you're hiring an organization that has hundreds of people that help hundreds of other school districts. And they know what the cutting edge is. They have all of the latest and greatest. And can have a much better path than three to five individuals. And that's not to, you know, put anybody down. I'm not trying to do that. But it's, it's the truth that when you go to these companies and you start talking to them and you bring their entire wealth of knowledge to the table. Uh, it's gonna help accelerate the, the process that much faster.
Mm-hmm.
So again, I know I, I am waving the outsourcing flag here to help you. I, I want you to manage it.
Yep.
But, um, and I, when I read all of this, the, uh, my gut just screams, you know, why, why haven't we outsourced any of this yet? You know, so.
Paul, why don't we kinda move on? I wanna move on to, if you can go review for the benefit of the, of the group here. Um, the technology budget priorities. I see you've got some, you've got some things that, uh, I think as a group we, we would like to hear, we need to hear about. For FY fifteen, which we're about six months away from ending.
Right.
Um, and there's, there's three items already on here that have some, some, some hefty dollar amounts on them that you're looking to get accomplished, I think, this evening. And then also as we prepare for our budget for next year and going through these conversations. So if you can walk us through, it's towards the, it's the, it's the third to last page here for the benefit of the group here. Um, technology budget priorities FY fifteen.
Okay.
Can walk us through what you're looking for on that?
Yeah.
And what is this, A, what does it do? B, what are you looking for? And C, how can we help?
All right. Mind if I steal one of your guys, just so I can, I don't have that piece of it with me, so. Okay. All right, so the top one there of FY two thousand and fifteen, obviously, right?
That's where we wanna start. That's where we're sitting in right now. So this is, uh, what I would tell you, so this is.
Yep.
This is, yeah, we're gonna have to budget it within our, we're gonna have to find this money, any requests that are in here, within our current existing budget. And this is what we'll roll to Kathy to see how creative her math skills get.
Right. And, uh, and that's what we were talking about earlier about the network architecture mapping. And, um, I, I've had three vendors already, um, you know, propose, uh, give us a proposal for that, you know, and the objectives. And, uh, um, the, uh, line items of what they're going to do and accomplish for us within that, uh, mapping. And, um, it mentions it's a four to six week initiative. I don't think it's gonna be quite that long. Um, based on another, what another company had mentioned. So we can shorten that up. But, um, it, it is kind of an extensive, uh, uh, program that we're, that we're going to enter. Um, but again, that just gives us everything that we need going forward. That's the first priority that's on the list. Um, it, it's kind of a network health check, uh, to see what it can hold and what it can't hold. And, you know, where the holes are and what we need to, uh, to, to fix. So.
So are you looking for an allocation of twenty or twenty-three thousand dollars?
Um, it actually, that was the initial, uh, one that I first came out with, with the first vendor. But, um, given our choices of vendors now, um, it came in at almost half of that, basically.
Okay.
So, um.
So that's done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, that money's already allocated. You've, we've spent that, that money has been spent, the check's been cut, cashed done, they're in, you're doing this now?
We're prepared locally, Scott, um, to, um, to address all the fiscal fifteen.
Okay.
Areas of need to help Paul. We wanna make sure that the school committee's clear on what those areas are that you need our support in. But we're prepared to go forward and fund all of this.
So one, one, we're able to fund out of our current budget to the tune, you said it's about half that. So you're talking about somewhere around, around ten to twelve thousand dollars that we're able to fund out of our current budget, is that? I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm, I'm hearing this correctly. Is that right, Kathy?
That's correct.
And that check's been cut, purchase order's been done?
Check hasn't been cut until the orders, work is completed.
Okay, but purchase order's in place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the second one there is, uh, one dot two, and it just talks about updating and reconfiguring the infrastructure here. There's a, there's a centralized room where the actual, um, internet connection comes in. And it's kind of already, um, was kind of the hub, so to speak, of the servers and that sort of thing that exists here in the high school. And, um, so that's where I would prefer to keep it anyway, uh, because a lot of the wiring comes in there and so forth. So to, to build that up, we were talking about, you know, getting the routers and some switches. Because right now I think the switches we have are over capacity. There's no, there's no additional ports that we can use on those switches. And, um, they are older, a- as we mentioned before. I mean, uh, considerable years are on those switches. So, uh, we need to upgrade those and, uh, the firewall appliances too, just to kinda. And, and again, this is just a base, um, to put into that room. So that once the one dot three comes in, that we can have a stable, somewhat foundation that we can just start porting over. Um, wings of the building onto this infrastructure and test it. And, uh, make sure everything's good before we kinda flip a switch. So, uh, that we can do that before even the summer break.
But Paul, you, you only mentioned the high school. What about the other schools?
Yeah, the other schools that, I mean, i- i- it's gonna be almost impossible to do those all together because of the actual fiber. You know, getting the fiber in will help us to connect all those schools together.
Okay.
But we need to start with one, a- and that's why I picked the high school, cause it has the most users in them. U- users in the high school and, uh, different schools and communities. Um, so we, we figured to choose that one, um, to, to be the base, the hub. And not so much the testing ground, but the stability of the, the network, so.
Flip the question around. In the district, what school is in dire need? What's the number one school that needs the infrastructure? Is it the high school?
Stacey and Middle School East are both, um, they don't have a server. They have a couple of switches. Yeah, I've seen a few on the floor or, you know, i- in, in a classroom. Um, theirs are the networks that kinda go down quite a bit because, you know, of people bring in devices and that sort of thing, so.
So explain to me again, please, and I'm sorry you have to do this. Why would you pick the high school?
Um, uh, just because that's the hub. Uh, I mean, that's the mo- the most users, um. I, I, I know Woodland's coming on and, uh, there was some talk, I don't know about East is not.
That's still in process.
Okay.
To Mike's point on the Stacy piece, again, I tried to keep things as simple as possible. Just because I drive my car the most doesn't mean it's the next one, and it's the one that needs to be replaced.
Yep.
If my wife's car is older and in disrepair, we gotta buy her, we gotta fix hers first.
Mm-hmm.
I think to your point and to Kathy's point, if Stacy's the one that's limping along, I can tell you right now, we just spent tens of millions of dollars. On that building a, a number of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
If that's the one that's limping along, to Mike's point, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
I understand it's where the highway, I understand it's the highway.
Yep.
Why are we spending the money? If we only have, we've only got so many funds to spend. Why are we spending it on the place where, yes, it's the most usage, but it's not where the greatest need is? The greatest need is Stacy, why wouldn't we start there?
Uh, and the, the other point I, I feel, I feel to mention too was the fact of, you know, central office is tied to this, along with the budget, the payroll. And all the, uh, the workings that go behind all of the schools reside within the central office. And that was, that was a big component for that too, so. Um, but you're right, I mean, thirty-two thousand dollars put to Stacy could make a huge difference in that school alone. So we could start with the smallest like that. Um, I just focused on here because of those reasons of the more people would be helped, uh, sooner. And the fact of, you know, the kindergarten, the high school and the, uh, central office would be attached to that too.
So from a risk perspective, where's the greatest, are we at a risk component? It sounds like pretty broad-based.
Yep.
Is there, is there a significant risk at the high school for all the things we just talked about? Cause it could have district-wide implications.
Mm-hmm.
There's implications in every building.
Yep.
There's student implications to Jen's point earlier. That's educational in, uh, um, implications. There's teacher issues, there's facet, there's, there's all kinds of challenges with each building. If this were to be reallocated towards Stacy, is the high school in a position right now? And only you will know this night, I won't, I don't, I haven't looked at it. If I did, it's, might as well be looking at spaghetti on the floor. I won't know the difference. What is, what does this look like to us? We, we need you to tell us, where is the best place to spend this money?
And that's, that's the piece why I have the, uh, the, the one dot one up at the top. Because after we have that, that, that in essence gives us a clear picture of every building that we have. And, and as you mentioned, the, the frailty of what's there and what's not there. So, um, to, to that end, that, that's the farthest, that's the crucial piece to this whole puzzle right now, is getting that done.
Just, let me just ask a, a simple question.
Yep.
If, if we were to do Stacy now, could the high school go next year?
No.
It wouldn't last that long?
No.
Okay.
So what's your, yep, that's good. That's what we want.
Yeah.
So the first one's gonna tell us what the sec, where the second one needs to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that thirty-two a real cost?
Um, that thirty-two, I, I, I have a note there, I said that, that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, I see it. It says that the cost will, will fluctuate based on the results of this. So this is an estimate?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I, I guess where I look at this too is, is to your point, we've gotta get network structuring, architecturing done first. To get the second one done, to get the third one done. Seems to be a domino effect. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that, that's true. It, the, the one dot two and one dot three could go in concurrently, I guess. But number one's gotta tell us the, the priorities of where to go, so, yep.
Okay. So from an allocation perspective and, and Bob and Kathy, my question on this one would be. Are we prepared and, and what dollars do we have available to us through our FY fifteen budget? To be able to absorb the cost to do, it sounds like, I mean, realistically, it sounds like it's at least two buildings that we're gonna have to do that are on triage at this point.
Uh, let, let me answer that, Scott.
Yep.
Um, first, um, to Paul's point, the one point one is already, um, contracted out and ready to go. I think it's key that we have that in, um, not to upset the apple cart with the one point two. But just on Monday, in my research of getting going with the fiber option under E-rate, did it come to my attention? That Stacy has the oldest switches and is in the most need of getting them upgraded. And they're the building that is staying online, whereas East is of course going offline, getting off ta- topic in terms of the money. It would be my suggestion to wait till one point one is complete, so that we have a clear picture of what they're recommending. And if school committee at that point would like to do a balance transfer from our active school budget or visit school choice. To get some of these items going, that will be the time that we can take a look at it. So I think it's gonna work well for us to wait a month for this mapping assessment to happen. And then we can apply those funds where they'll best be fit.
So I, I.
I don't think we're gonna have fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year to do everything, so.
And I, and I.
I think July first is really where we're gonna do most of our game plan work for technology. But I think we're gonna be able to do a portion of this project. So that's why I'm, I'm recommending waiting for the one point one.
Okay. Do we have an expected completion date for that?
Um, it's, it's funny, I met with, uh, the vendor today and basically almost tied the knot really. So, uh, they can get started probably within a week or two.
And it will take, you said three weeks, four to six?
Uh, for this vendor, it'll probably take, uh, three to four.
Three to four weeks. So they could get started, you said, as soon as when?
Uh, he was talking about eight days out, so a week and a half-ish, yeah.
February second.
Yep.
Okay. Right after we all celebrate Patriots winning the Super Bowl. Um, they're able to start. So it's for three to four weeks potentially?
Mm-hmm.
So we're really talking March first. Okay.
I would think, yeah.
So I guess one of the things is on that piece, and I guess where my, where my head's going to. And Kathy, I certainly appreciate what you're saying of, we wanna make sure we're, we're, we're spending the money judiciously. The other thing is, is because we only meet twice a month, I would hate to have us hold up. If, if it's, if what's holding back that next vendor from showing up and moving this forward. I think the, just based on the comments and the, and the general sense that I'm getting from the committee is there is an abundance of urgency. From the school committee of trying to get this accomplished. Is there anything, is it possible for us to either authorize through either a motion, a motion second and vote this evening? The ability for, to, to grant the freedom to be able to, when those, when, when we're at that position. To give you, to give Paul that authority from a, from a fund, from a budget perspective, to get those funds transferred as need be, to be able to get that done. Obviously, we, very similar to what we've done from a town perspective of, we sort of give a guideline, no greater than X, Y, Z dollars.
To be honest with you, um, I don't see it happening in the local budget right now.
Okay.
Um, not within technology and possibly not within our own budget with two areas that are growing rapidly, which is utilities. Um, the electricity as well as our out-of-district line. We had three students in the last four weeks that went out of district, substantial cost impact. Um, could be a couple hundred thousand dollars right there. So that's why I'm, I'm looking at that month. Now, the option you do have as a school committee is to put that authorization in the school choice technology line. If you would allow, um, Paul and I to visit that line and to increase it, um, with a vote to, up to X. Whatever the committee feels comfortable with, out of school choice, um, revenue, that's an option.
So I'll, I'll open it up to the committee if that's something that would be the pleasure of the committee to, um, give that authorization. Up to a certain dollar amount, um, out of a school choice, if that's where we choose that we wanna start to spend that money. And Kathy, you, you're gonna know if you feel, based on what we've got from a budget perspective, is that something that we could potentially afford?
I would say yes. And let me just point out one thought that I'm having. Is that we do have a, um, annual operating technology budget line in school choice. So essentially, I feel that with that account is revolving, we're kind of just putting our projects a little earlier. If we started them now and took that amount of money in consideration for the, um, school choice operating budget for next year. Knowing that that project was done, now we know what our balance is that we would have available to, uh, work with, with technology.
I think personally, I would rather see the report before the money gets spent.
Absolutely fair. I think that's the point of the, I'm fine with that. It's more of a, I'm trying to gauge based on the urgency in the room of. It may be, we, we just delayed the project by yet another two to, two, two plus weeks or so because of.
I'd rather have you call me up. Call me up and make me come to another meeting.
I'm fine with that. I just wanna make sure, based on the pleasure of the committee, I wanted to make sure that we've got, you know, that we're.
Thank you.
If the holdup is us, that's where it's gonna be a real problem. So I wanna make sure it's not a scheduling issue with us being able to do that, to be able to make sure that, you know, when that comes back on March first. And they're done and they say, okay, we're ready, that it's not, we're not waiting for another two weeks for us to meet again in order to be able to start to do some authorization on that. So I, I would say for our, um, as, if we can just make sure for, as we get to probably our second meeting in February. If we can make sure that we get an update on where we are on that process. So, and, and, and Paul, I'm not gonna say necessarily that you would need to come back and do that. But if Kath, if, through working with Kathy and, and with Bob, give us an update on where we are on that process. Um, assuming that that, that those are, that we are well down the road here, um, three, three weeks in. Four weeks in, we should be nearing completion based on the timeline that you're, you're, you're saying is coming in.
Correct.
Um, that way we're, we're in a pretty good spot to be able to act. Jen?
I just wanna, just out of curiosity, for Kathy and Kevin and Bob and Paul, you, you're all in the schools, obviously, every day and we're not. So not to diminish the importance of the report, because I think we need it and need to understand what the findings are. But if you had to make the decision today, I, I can't imagine this was done in isolation. So was, was the. If you had to make the decision today, I, I can't imagine this was done in isolation, so was, was the recommendation to start with the high school kind of a collective decision on the part of the school? Department, central administration, that this is where, if you had to, if you had the money in your pocket today, this is where you would start, based on what you guys know? That I or we may not know?
I just wanna, I, my recommendation was to move forward with one point two.
Yeah.
Until I heard of the age of the switches at Stacy this week.
Okay.
Those are, those have to be replaced, so that Stacy can function.
Okay.
Uh, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but I've also heard that the high school is really for us to grow. The switches are not that antiquated in comparison to Stacy, that Stacy's are older. So, right now we're idling at the high school, we're not having significant drop offs or. Um, the network isn't going down, the servers are up to date, so my feeling is we should really be concentrating. On the frustration at Stacy when they're having the internet drop offs.
Yeah, I've received the number, just to that point, I, I can tell you in the last, um, in the last couple of weeks, I've received a number of phone calls from teachers at Stacy. Expressing concerns over technology and, and some of the tickets that Paul was talking about of, you know, tickets being requested of. I, I need to get a, I, I've got a printer, I've gotta get hooked up, the tickets put in on October, it's January, there's still waiting.
Right.
Now some of that's come to be fixed in the last week or so, which is great, but October to January is, those are some of the tickets that Paul was talking about earlier. And then also, um, um, you know, what do we do with devices that are, that are now. Essentially, essentially dead, uh, dead devices sitting in there, sitting in some classrooms. There are some classrooms at Stacy as well that have devices that are, they're not even plugged in anymore. Um, they've been replaced, there's a new device that's in there, but the old one was never taken away. Um, a- and we've had teachers that have, have, have reached out to me that have said, so I have a device in my room, what do I do with it? They go and talk to, they put in a ticket, somebody comes in and says, no, you need to call custodial, custodial co- shows up and says, no, you need to call IT. Now you've got a teacher that's going, I just need to teach, and I need this to not be here, I don't care who does it, just get rid of it. Um, eh, eh, I had one teacher that even says, should I just put it in my car and take it to Staples, cause they'll take it? And I don't think we want teachers doing that, especially because we may get some rebates or there may be something else. That's planned for that, but I, I would just, those are some of the things to, to Kathy's point, Stacy's in a tough, tough position.
And the teachers are getting so frustrated, they're trying to fix their own problems, and they're bringing in wifi. Po- um, network adapters, and that's causing the network to loop and it can't handle that, it's not fixed for, in, you know. Portable WiFi's, and that's causing us a problem because they just wanna be able to have the technology available.
Thank you.
So Paul, with that comment that, that was just made by Kathy, that's a perfect example of what we're talking about, is when you come before us. You gotta tell us what you need to do your job, so we're not sitting here some evening on TV listening to. Pe- teachers are bringing in wifi adapter units to try and get their own, you know, uh, computers running in their rooms, that's not fair, they're teachers. They have a responsibility to teach children. It's our responsibility to help you be able to do your job, so that you can run the IT department. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, one point two, we're gonna, we're gonna wait to get some information on one point one. Um, so the next two school committee meetings, certainly the second one in February, we'll look for an update Kathy on where we are with that. Um, I, I think it goes without saying urgency is appreciated and rewarded. So, uh, I think that's been a loud and clear message this evening.
Yep.
Let's you, give you the opportunity to just continue on through here.
Okay. Um, so just move on to like sixteen and two thousand sixteen?
Yep.
Okay. Um, eh, these were just some priorities that we had, uh, initiated on top of what we could get done before, uh, the end of the school year. And, um, obviously to Don's point too, it's like we'd wanna get this stuff done even prior to this, but, uh. We looked at the number one there, the wireless connectivity, uh, wireless internet connectivity. And I, I put in parentheses again, you know, starting with the high school first, just because, you know, with the wifi, the most usage would be here. And that infrastructure would be in place here, in terms of, uh, wifi being able to, uh, be supported. Uh, because to have good wifi, you gotta have a good infrastructure, you gotta have a good wired network in order to have the wifi available too, so. Um, twenty-nine thousand dollars was, uh, estimated for access points and, uh. The heat mapping tests and so forth for each building too, so. That was the, uh, the upfront cost, and depending on the extent of how we need to scatter those access points out. Uh, each one of those is a cost, so that, that could go up depending on the studies that we perform, so. Um, second, obviously, uh, here it says backup and recovery implementation, um, y- you know, and, and to Don's point too, mentioning the cloud aspect of that. Um, instead of having hardware and software, we know everything's going to the cloud base, um, in terms of that, so we're looking into solutions for that. And we'll get, um, you know, different options as we go forward to, uh, see what the best fit would be. Uh, monthly cost, uh, per grade student and so forth, person. Um, a- and then we, we put in the one-to-one technology, the pilots, um, and I think as you'll see later on, we, the moderate scale one here is to put in. You know, a hundred devices, um, for one-to-one, just getting ready for that full-blown initiative. And, um, you know, I think what we talked about too is having that full-blown when Woodland comes online. Um, for that following year, so that's why we wanted to get those starting to roll out, uh, ahead of time, so that teachers are. Up to speed with the technology and have used it enough before that gets wide scale with the students. Um, documents to the cloud and the web and so forth, I was just talking about, uh, how we can share documents and. You know, kinda lay off of the server aspect of it where everything resides on a physical hardware piece, but, um. Having that, uh, done through the web and each student have their own account and, you know, you can share back and forth and. There's other options too with the, you know, in terms of Google Docs and how Google is coming into play more, where they're giving a lot of free things away too, so that might change. As we get further in, in time with that. Um, and then the number five was just that fiber internet connection for all the schools. Uh, it was kinda redundant, but I just put it in as that additional cost that we're going to have as a, as a maintenance cost going forward. Uh, number six is the hikes, high school architecture, uh, build out. Um, this was on top of that current, uh, one dot two. To really start to bolster the network as to the way that it should be. In terms of having, you know, active directory, domain servers, you know, and, and the way data should be passed through the network. So those were just the additional costs there, because once that mapping is done, we're gonna understand that we need. Uh, more switches down these long hallways to, you know, continue to connect, uh, all of the students together and so forth, so.
Hang on one second, Paul, Joe.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, I, I guess, one comment first, um, you know, what, what, what kinda stood out as we were going through this is that, um. Here we are talking about that additional architecture buildup, but there's still no reference to any of the other schools, and we just talked about the need at Stacy, so I'm surprised that that wasn't. Referenced in here, so now, kinda, it leads me to think that there may be some other things missing as, as well. Um. The, the technology task force, eh, who, who encompasses the technology task force today?
Uh, we have Bob, myself, uh, we have Donna and Steve Weber and, um. Oh, I forget, uh. There was a couple of other people on there too.
Yeah, we have, um, Kevin's on that group of us.
Kevin, yes, yeah.
Sarah Boyle.
Sarah Boyle, yeah, Dan Nelson, that's it, yep, sorry.
Eh, eh, it may be worth it, also, you know, and Don, I know that Maine is actually one of the front runners in the country. On, uh, on their one-to-one initiative, and, uh, and you're right, you know, the other districts have put a number of, uh, iPad initiatives or whatever it may be, but we're looking at, um. Considering Milford demographics, the affordability of these devices, you know, lease options for kids, so. We have some field trips set up, as we talked about in previous meetings, to see, um, for example, in Medfield, is it BYOD? Everyone, you know, the concept there, Westwood looking at that as a Chromebook, um, model, and we're in North Attleboro. See their Microsoft solution that they have in their school district, so we're gonna be seeing all these, the whole task force. So, with, what Paul's, I think, alluding to here in the report is that we're kinda leaning toward a, toward a, a combination. Not it being a single like iPad initiative for the school district, so. We are looking at that, we are a little bit behind from where other communities are, but we're taking it more, I guess more cautious step to make sure we can have the architecture in place. Last thing I wanna do is give a thousand devices and then nobody can get on.
I, I remember three years ago when schools were rolling them out, it was great to have, but there wasn't, you know, class. Material ready.
Mm-hmm.
But, it's come a long way, right?
It, eh.
And that's the great thing about technology, this, the sad thing is, is as fast as you can put it in, it changes, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I can keep your, your, right there on the pulse, but it's, uh. But I mean, there's so many great things that are available out there, and I, I know all of those companies that you just mentioned, they all fight for the business with the, with the students. Because they know if they get their brand in there, th- there's a good likelihood that that child is gonna. Hold on to be an iOS person or, uh, you know, or Microsoft, uh, you know. Because they've used it and loved it when they were younger, so they fight over this, and that's how the, you know, schools can get such great deals. Uh, because of that brand loyalty that they're all fighting for, and I know Apple had, uh, it's pretty amazing grants and stuff like that for schools, so.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do our homework, is, uh, Bob set those up with like the three different brands. Uh, to come in and give us their pitch and so forth, and, uh, now the next step is we're seeing, we're going to different, uh, schools that have implemented. Each one of those to see how they're actually running, and I know from my side and the technology side for the infrastructure. I'm doing the same thing with, uh, you know, how it's laid out in terms of their fiber coming in and how their network room's laid out in the wifi. Because we wanna do it right the first time too, because I remember going to, I think it was, uh. Um, well, I don't wanna give the name, but he, he said he did it once and they brought all these one, these devices in. And they counted a, as a one-to-one, a true one-to-one, where in essence it's really. One to three, because everybody has an iPad, an iPhone, and it, you know, and it crashed the entire infrastructure. So he had to go back to his hardware manufacturer, eh, you know, the vendor. And say, what in the world, you know, so they had to come back in and just kinda redo the whole thing, so it, it goes a little bit to the cautious approach of. Really doing our, our homework in the, in the beginning of it too, so.
Yeah, I, I remember actually bumping into Craig's, Craig Consigli at a, uh. At a technology summit, in Western Mass, and it was geared to schools.
Yeah.
And it was interesting to hear about how some of the schools, instead of giving them to the kids, were, you know, now they're mounting them to the desks, right?
Oh, wow.
So that they're not taking them off and, and, uh, you know, this whole thing about insurance and all this kinda stuff, but, you know, as soon as we give the kids this, then they're gonna have interactive desks and stuff like that, so.
Right.
So I, um, just, you know, as we continue to move forward through, through here, so we've got, again, I think going through. You know, where we go, I think this is gonna be a. Where this will become valuable is when this becomes a living and breathing document.
Yeah.
When this becomes something that truly begins to come to life, we get consistent and current updates on what's changing.
Mm-hmm.
If this remains static.
Yeah.
It's, we're, we're dead in the water, a- and again, we're, we're not in a position. As it's, as, as fiscally responsible as the town of Milford has been. A technology challenge. Um, could be, will be devastating if it's, if it's, can, if, if it's not addressed in a very, in a very quick manner. Um, I, I, I think it's something that, uh, as we look at the one-on-one of how we're preparing our students to become. Um, more ingrained into technology, and we're le- and we're leveraging that piece, I love the fact that you're looking at all these things. One of my asks would personally be as well as, is, I know Apple is a very popular home use, um, the iOS process. Is, my ask would be is, is, are we working with, I know we've got a lot of partners in town, we've got some partnerships through our hospitality program with. Um, um, with Doubletree, um, we've got a number of businesses in town, are we working with some of our business partners in town? To understand what is the future of technology, what are some of those platforms, as an example, Apple's great, but if you don't work in the design field, once you get out of, once. Once you get out of, once you get out of college, you'll never see an Apple again, except at home to listen to music. Because if you work in any other industry in the world, everything's, everything is still on the Microsoft platform. Um, by the same token, there's not a kid on the planet that'll ever buy a Microsoft phone, cause there's no applications for it, none, not one. So, are we, my ask would be, make sure we're balancing user friendliness and all the technology components, but also. How are we preparing them for post, for postgraduate, how are we, how are we preparing them for once they get into college and, and further into life, to Donnie's point? You know, we may be making these guys lifelong users and potentially co- uh, clients of these companies, are we preparing them for their knowledge level? Of what they're actually gonna potentially use in their professional lives as they move forward?
Yep, and those were exact points that we actually had within our technology force meeting, the last one that we had too, so that's a good point.
And also leveraging those partnerships with some of our businesses, I, I know there are businesses, I know EMC has been very generous to some of our neighboring towns. In donations, great, how many do you need, all right, we'll pay for fifty percent, here's a check for X, Y, Z, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Working with some of those partners. They have, it is ben- it is, there is tax benefits to them for my, writing checks to schools. They wanna do those things, it's good, it's good, it's good PR for them as well, making sure we're reaching out to the, to the community to make sure we're. We've got a lot of very large businesses and very influential people and large corporations around the, around the world. That live right here in our backyard, let's, I wanna make sure we're, we're continuing to leverage that.
Yeah, it's a great point, I know something too, yeah, thank you.
Mike, I saw your hand go up.
Question, on the technology task force, how many, how many members actually have technology backgrounds?
I would say all of the, I mean, all.
No disrespect, I take you and Kevin to be educators.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Appreciate that, Mike.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It's, it's more than fifty percent.
Yeah.
Of that group.
Are in the technical.
All of our, all of our tech staff are on the desk.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Wanna move over to FY seventeen, I think you finished up sixteen.
Uh, yeah, we certainly can, a- and as you mentioned, this will be a fluid document, so we're just kinda, kinda throwing projections out there for that, that long ahead of time, but, um. You, you know, obviously we wanna get in preparation for the park testing too, I know over the next couple of years it's gonna be still a pencil and paper type of thing, but, uh, we wanna. Obviously, uh, you know, by then have a device chosen, and we've already gone to a couple of, uh, the seminars in other school districts, uh, you know, Kevin and, and Bob went as well. Um, in terms of figuring out, uh, the protocol and the, the correct device and the keyboard and all that stuff. And how it's supported and maintained and what's the best option to go to, so. Uh, we're looking at that, and, and by then we should have a, a good picture of what device, you know, and as they change to, what device is appropriate for those and. And mandated by the state and so forth, so. Um, a- and that goes down with the centralized management too of all those devices for the, for the, uh, updates. Uh, number two is just the one-to-one, uh, that was the full implement, implementation, by that time we should be ready to just roll them out, you know, to as many as we can. Um, so I just put in there, you know, a thousand devices, you know, so it'd be a three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for that implementation. And, uh, number three, I, I know is just kind of a, an, an ongoing thing with the nursing, uh, management system, so we wanted to kinda. Wrap that up, I don't know too much about it, but I just know it needs to be, um. Uh, not, not in compliance, but, um, synchronized, I guess, all across the, uh, the nursing's departments in each school, so.
Right, you, right now, just to comment on that, right, we use a program called Health Office Suite for our nursing staff. But our current database, uh, management system X two, Aspen X two, has a nursing management component. And so it really is a migration cost.
One other question, one of the questions, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Don.
On, eh, speaking of X two, right, um, the instructional resources, is it their job to be kinda like train the trainer, they go and be the experts and then they go out? To the, you know, different schools and they're the point person for.
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
All right, cause I, Mike, you remember that time we were in that, we were in a meeting once with, with the secretaries? And, uh, you know, one of the comments was, you know, the X two is really underutilized and the reason being is, a lot of people don't understand. How, what it can be done and, and what you can use it for, and unfortunately, like, once one or two people know it, then. Everybody kinda relies on them to, to do those things, so I think one of the important things to do. Um, you know, well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's being done, but, you know, how much time do we give our teachers and. And, um, you know, staff, you know, training time, uh, to, to really. You know, make sure that we're getting everything, the value out of all of the software that's available to them, I mean, is that something that we, we need to help you with and?
It's a, I'll, I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest, it's a, it's a tremendous challenge, because there's so many areas that they have to be trained, like take the park, for example, there's so much training required for how our teachers actually give that assessment. And to prepare it, you know, it's so, it's weighing that, so I, w- the way I envision it working, given that we don't have a lot of time set aside for professional development around. And everybody's at a different point in terms of their own knowledge, is having Sarah, like we proposed in the fiscal sixteen budget with an additional instructional technology person, is to really customize it and say. Well, Sarah will spend time at, say, Woodland School this week and will help teachers, if it's, you wanna expand your usage of X two, she can do that. If you wanna, if a teacher's at a different level wants to better integrate using Smartboard, she can help with that, so Sarah right now is our, kind of our go-to person for every platform. We only have one of her.
Right.
And so I think the, the only way we can handle it time-wise is to have Sarah provide, continue to provide that one-to-one training. We can try to pull the secretaries together to do it. We can try to pull the secretaries together to do it, um, to do that. It would have to be after hours because they're all working and managing, and many schools only have one. To be the front door person. So if you do it after school, now it's sort of an overtime expense. So it's it's a difficult balancing act, but if Sarah could be there, working with, say, a secretary at a school in real time, saying, hey, did you know that in X two, you could do this, this and this? That's really the way that we we've been approaching it. So it's not ideal, but given the number of resources we have staffing-wise and the time, that's how we've been handling it. But you're absolutely right, if we can show them more about how we can expand the use of wha- all the platforms we do have. Cause X two, and I think you pointed out to me earlier, you know, about, you know, which you've experienced in Maine, can do a lot of what power schools can do.
Yeah.
Is do we have, do we, do we know how to use it well enough to access that?
Paul, could you just clarify the three hundred thousand for twenty seventeen for Woodland, the Chromebooks? Is that in addition to the money that's already being allocated through the MSBA for the new building project? Because I know there is a technology budget for any new building, so i- is this above and beyond what's already being allocated for Woodland through that process?
I I can speak to that.
Okay.
Uh, uh, so the the Woodland project, uh, for technology, the that committee wanted to put the infrastructure money, the the money into the infrastructure. To make sure it has a completely robust network with the wireless point throughout all three levels. So it does not include, because we couldn't predict at that point what the devices will be.
Okay.
So we wanna go forward with a locally appropriated for the devices. But using the technology money to build the architecture so it has a a a long shelf life that will support it.
Okay.
For every, for every kid in in Woodland School to access.
And will there be other technology besides the Chromebook, so will they have?
Yeah, and and I think, I think, you know, it's sort of cart before the horse, we've, we've.
So that's just like placeholder?
Chromebook is is that.
Yeah, that was a misprint, I crossed it out now. I'm like, I I didn't, when I wrote this at the time, I'm like, oh, Chromebook, so it, that's just a device right now.
With every, you know, with every presentation, you think, well, this Chromebook might be the answer, but you know, in a year's time, it may not be. Microsoft's rolling out a new device for seventy-nine dollars that does what a Chromebook can do, that hasn't been released yet.
Right.
And that'll be interesting to see and that might bring that cost down and it's what, like Don was saying, everyone's competing for the best product for the best price.
Yeah.
But the Woodland project is, does not include devices as part of the technology line, it'll be something locally appropriated.
So at some point, the discussion will have to, um, include Brookside and Memorial. Because they will, I don't know if Woodland will have some non-obsolete leftovers that will get deployed to Brookside and Memorial, but.
Yeah, so we're testing out a number of devices. Right now, for example, we have about two hundred iPads in circulation in the Milford schools. So we shouldn't say that we're not a one-to-one school district. In many cases, we are, particularly our special needs students who are using these, uh, and Apple iPads work very well for those students. And the applications there. Uh, in other cases, uh, for example, at the kindergarten level, um, teachers are using this this program called, uh, Teaching Strategies Gold. And as part of that kindergarten assessment, um, they will have to upload and collect data. They do that through a tablet. Um, Brookside School is now using Nexus nine tablets, uh, and is that a, is that a Google pla- is it a Chrome platform?
Yeah.
Okay, and then at Memorial School, they're using iPads. And it's really so the teachers can have the dialogue about which product do we think is doing the job better and for the price. So we can find that an iPad for four hundred dollars is doing something that a, uh, that a hundred fifty dollar solution can do.
Yeah.
So we're testing, field testing at various levels throughout the district right now, various products.
Okay.
So that's, that's how we're getting to make a decision collectively as to where's the best direction for us to go.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then as part of that, I guess, one of the things to Jen's point that I'd definitely like to see on this is, so it's great that we see a a line item here for this, for Woodland School. One of the things that, again, I'm, I I say, I would say that I'm missing is is. That's one school, uh, we've three elementary schools.
Mhm.
And then we have an out, then we have a middle school and then we have a high school. So it's great, so I just, as I'm envisioning this, just as it comes down the line.
It's a problem, yep.
So it's great, so kindergarten, first and second grade, minimal technology use. They get to the, they get to, they get to Woodland, this beautiful new school, they come in, they get these, they get the the one-to-one devices, they have access, they're using all the technology. They finish fifth grade, they go to Stacy and it's, yeah, I'll take back the device here, your paper and pencil back again, and are we doing that? We wanna continue that technology integration, um, and increasing it, I mean, again, that, if you wanna, I I say it all the time. If you wanna know how to fix the remote, if you wanna know how to do anything from a technology perspective, bring in a teenager. They all know how to do things far beyond any of our capabilities. Um, we wanna make sure we're able to continue to foster that and give them that access well beyond just Woodland.
Okay.
So, um.
Should have them doing the tickets.
What'd you say?
Should have them doing the tickets, should have the class.
We do, that's.
Do it in the high school.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other questions from the, from the board for Paul?
It's not a question, it's just a comment.
Yep.
I I just, you know, again, sorry to bombard you with all this. It's just, we've been waiting for three years to have this conversation.
I appreciate the input, no, thank you.
So.
Uh, thank you, Paul. Appreciate you coming in. Um, again, I I I think some, some pretty strong takeaways from tonight.
Definitely.
Um, urgency is.
Key.
Critical, um, don't try and guess, let, we we wanna be able to give you all the tools to be able to do your job efficiently. You gotta let us do our job efficiently and that's to be able to let us figure out what the budget is and work on what we can give you. Come in and ask for what you need.
Okay.
Not what you think we wanna hear.
Right.
Okay, and still, as communication will be critical as we go forward. I know Rob Quinn is an amazing resource.
Okay.
He's extremely talented in being able to find creative ways to phase things in. We haven't gone for a capital improvement with the exception of Woodland Schools and I can't even count how many years now. Because he's been able to phase things in and do it within operating budgets, he's a tremendous resource for the town. I would certainly encourage, I know you guys have worked together already on some of the fiber things and some of the, some of the technology in the classroom. Continue to work together as we had him in the last meeting as well. Continuing to work with, as facilities becomes more ingrained in our technology, making sure you guys are working really closely together. Increased communication will be critical as we continue to roll this out. Again, thank you so much for everything and, uh, and for the work.
All right.
We'll afford to see more in the very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Okay, great, thank you.
Have a good night, Paul.
Have a good evening, Paul.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our next item, uh, which is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources. Kathy, you're up.
Yes, I have to agree with you with four warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars and eight six, eight cents.
Okay, take a motion from Mike, second from Jen, all in favor? Unanimous in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of four hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, uh, take a motion from Joe, second from Joey, all in favor? Motion passes.
The third warrant is in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Take a motion from Don, second from Mike, all in favor? Motion passes.
And the last warrant is in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, take a motion from Jen, second from Joe, all in favor? Motion passes.
The committee has, um, for this evening, um, FY fifteen budget update. Just wanna reiterate two areas. The out-of-district tuition is a a concern and I am watching it, um, weekly. As well as, um, the newest, um, bid, uh, utility bid for the electrical bill will be coming in in January. So we'll have a better sense of what the new bid, uh, for our utilities will look like moving forward for the second half of the year. So I know it's, it's an increase, so I wanna see how we look in terms of supply and demand. And the committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. No vote is required, it's just for your information only.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, and that's all for this evening.
Okay.
And.
Just have Mr. Chair one question.
Yes.
Kathy, you you bring up an interesting point when you're talking about electricity.
Yes.
Is there any way, when you're driving around at night and you're looking at the schools, and I know you have to keep them lit up for safety and things like that. But is there any, has anybody looked at any way to save energy at the schools at night?
Yeah.
The high school, all those lights that you see in the parking lot that are that are lit up are actually new, um, technology bulbs. That, uh, Rob did approximately a year or two ago.
Okay.
So even after the parking lot was, uh, built, we, uh, did a new initiative to bring that down. Um, the electrical department, National Grid came in and did that change out for us. Um, he's done other initiatives in other buildings. I wanna say there was something done at Memorial. And, um, another section of the high school. I could, you know, get more details for you, Mike, to understand further what exactly those projects were.
Just as long as somebody's looking at it, you know?
Sure, sure.
You know, to to that point, Mike, um, so, um, one of my sons is a student at WPI. And they have to do a project, their junior year.
Hmm.
And his project, uh, Nantucket, uh, school district, had this group from WPI come down. And, you know, they housed them, uh, I think it was a team of twelve or thirteen. And their entire project was to, you know, look at how to reduce, uh, electricity in the district. And, you know, at the end, they had to provide the report of all their findings and recommendations and everything else like that. I mean, there are things out there like that that would be kinda, kinda cool to get involved in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Kathy, does that wrap you up?
That wraps me up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to subcommittees. We'll start without funnies.
No, man.
Okay, I know you had mentioned, uh, Joey, you had, that you guys are, you're looking to.
Yeah, I reached out to P I K and we all saw that he had, I mean, he said it before our next school meeting meeting.
I figured he's been settled down long enough, he can.
Yeah, I've never even, I've never even met him.
He's had a, he's had a month and a half, he's fine.
I missed the meeting when he was here, so I ha- I haven't even had a conversation with him.
So I, I think I'll have something for our next meeting.
Policy Subcommittee.
We, uh, we met last week. We have two policies, the Student Conduct Policy and a Policy on Service Animals, ready to go for the committee's review, so whenever we can get that on the agenda.
Okay, uh, Bob, if we can look for a future agenda item for those to review those two policies?
Yep.
Okay, I will connect on that. Okay, uh, Wellness.
As I reported in the last meeting, we did actually meet. I I promise you, next meeting, I will bring my notes to, uh, give a report. It was a very good meeting, it was very well attended. A lot of people in, you know, attended it, uh, a lot of great information came out of it, so I do wanna report on it.
Uh, one ask that I would have on that is, is I know that, um, part of the conversation, I've heard this from a number of folks in town. Um, had a, had a, had a conversation with, um, uh, with our health officer, Paul Mazakelli, around, uh, the concerns around tuberculosis. Um, and it's really just it re-entering not just into, uh, not, not just specifically into Milford, but into the state and into the United States. It's, it's seeing a resurgence, which it's really been dormant for for decades now. Um, one of the things that he's looking to do along with also, uh, some of the concerns I've heard from parents around. Uh, making sure that we have the right inoculations for all students that are, that are in the town. Um, health officer, uh, so Paul has asked, is is looking to work with, through our Wellness group.
Okay.
And through you guys, to establish, um, screenings for both tuberculosis, um, as well as for, uh, making sure immunizations are done, are are done.
Okay.
Um, and make sure everybody, there are some, some students, that there are some individuals in men, in all towns, Milford being one of them. Um, that may have been put on federal waivers for one br- for one reason or another, where they perhaps may not have. He wants, he's looking to provide clinics to be able to provide those. We, as a town, we actually get those, we actually get the immunizations for free. Through the Board of Health and from the Center for Disease Control, so he's looking to do that.
I'll call him tomorrow.
So he's, uh, he is anxious to actually not only work with you guys, but he'd actually like to, his ask was also, he'd like to come before the school committee as well. And talk about what his proposals are and I certainly would, I think that would be a great thing for us to work with.
I'll handle it.
Great, thanks, Mike. Safety and security.
No meeting, great.
We have one coming up on, um, March second and we've, we have a lobby guard that's flying up to give us a proposal on what they can do now. Sort of what the latest improvements are in that technology.
Great. Uh, Middle School East Reuse Committee, we have not met since the last meeting. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, so, um, we will have another meeting. I'll have another update for you at the next meeting. Uh, and Woodland Building Project, you're up.
Uh, we've not met. The meeting was gonna happen yesterday, put it off till next week, so I'll give it up to the next meeting.
Great. Uh, up next, we'll have, uh, future agenda items, so we've already got the the proposal for the, uh, for the two policies. We're gonna look to review for future agenda item. Any other future agenda items at the request of the committee? Okay, up next, we have, uh, any old business?
Hey, can I backtrack to the.
Future agenda items or old business?
Yeah. I, I think I mentioned.
Which, which is which one? You gotta tell me which one you wanna talk about.
Future agenda.
Okay, got it, okay.
Cause I think I mentioned this, I I think I mentioned this the last time, because I noticed the art changed, you know? And, uh, I thought I had asked, like, you know, for the future, can we have these kids in here? We used to have them in all the time.
Mhm.
And, uh, it'd be nice to lighten the mood up a little bit too, you know, just have the kids in here and, uh, you know.
Yeah, we, we actually have some students we wanna recognize. We didn't tonight because of the agenda for, you know, for the technology, the time needed, but we certainly can. Uh, I know the Boston Globe's Classic Art Awards typically come up around April, so the art students will come, but they they took off the, uh, the items that were kind of in, like, creative injuries, you know, the last round.
Well, we have like, you know, all the senior activities coming up and everything else like that and, I don't know, it would just be nice to. In the beginning of each meeting, just to have some student group come in here and.
Yeah, there's more than enough great things that are going on in the district that if we could.
Say about some fun, cool things.
Okay.
Like the robotics team, that was awesome.
I'm all for that.
Absolutely. And we did have at the last meeting done, we did also have, um, our Athletes of the Month.
Oh, nice, nice.
We did, yeah.
All right, um, that being said, any other items from the, from the committee? All right, so up next, we do have adjournment. We do have an executive session this evening, uh, the purposes of which, um, are for, uh, to, for contract negotiations. Uh, to discuss in open meeting would, uh, put us, would weaken our position, so we will be, we'll be moving into executive session. We will not be returning. Um, so we'll move for a motion to adjourn. Need to take a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mike, second from Don, all in favor? And good evening, thank, have a good night, everyone.